Commissioner Tesler is absent. Commissioner Nanki is absent. However, we have guest Commissioner Denise Quinn-Nanki.
Here.
Commissioner Claussen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Bernardz?
Here.
Commissioner Clem is absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. All right. Will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Note, Commissioner Tesler has joined us.
That's right.
We have no one signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who wants to talk to the Housing Authority? Want to talk to the Housing Authority? Anyone else not want to talk to the Housing Authority? Okay. Commissioner Dickey, would you move the consent calendar, please?
Yes, I move the consent calendar.
So moved.
Have a second by?
Bernardz.
Bernardz, yeah. Any discussion? Mr. Wilch, would you like to highlight anything in your program management report?
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I sure would. I included a brief article with some links to the information on the federal funding cuts, also known as sequestration, but I'll refer to it as federal funding cuts. Currently, as you know, Executive Director Lyndon Norris, two other Commissioners in Washington DC, talking with HUD, talking with the Oregon delegation about the impacts of these cuts. The information in the program management report not only talks about housing, but it's more broad to cover the impact of cuts to Oregon as a state. So if you haven't looked at that, it's kind of interesting. What we know right now is that the continuing resolution that's still in effect until March 27th, Senate and the House are reconciling on a budget. That budget for 2013 likely will, probably will, surely will include the cuts as set forth in the sequestration bill. So we don't really know the percentages. We don't really know, but we know that time is coming very quickly at the end of the month when we'll know a lot more in the reality most likely of the reduction for SHA Housing Authorities municipalities across the country.
Any questions? Anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, all those in favor of the motion say aye. Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We have no further business. Without objection, the Housing Authority is adjourned. Called order, the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for March 11th. Would you like to call the roll?
Yes. Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Tesler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki is absent. We have guest Board Member Denise Quinn-Nanki.
Here.
Board Member Claussen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Bernardz?
Here.
Board Member Clem is absent and Chair Peterson is absent.
Okay, it's time for public comment. Ron Sturba.
Good evening, Council. My name's Ron Sturba. I live at 520th Street Northeast Salem, and I'm here to speak as a nervous citizen, but a taxpayer of our community and hope that an idea of mine might be useful. Well, I'm going to say hooray for one taxpayer here because I was here in the fall and talked about the wooden bridge that was supposed to go from Minto Island all the way to the footbridge out here at the front park made out of wood. There was enough wood in there to make a Noah's Ark. It spanned 10 inches wide, over five miles long, if you put all the wood together, and that's not the support. And I brought to Council here who's going to be liable for that. The City of Salem, that's me, for anything downstream if that were to float. I got a letter from the city's Public Works Department, and it says, and it's also on the website now. We read that the path to Minto Island approaching the west end of the bridge will be asphalt pathway construction at an existing grade rather than wooden plank. I made a difference. I stood up here, I shook, and I'm shaking now, but I did something that I believed in, and I believe I saved the city over a million dollars, and which I'd like to give it to the West Salem Ward for their urban renewal projects. Now, the other thing is, is I don't want to see the bridge constructed where it is. I'm not against the bridge. I'd like it moved to the south end of Boise Cascade. We have a landmark riverboat down here, which the city is going to pay $50,000 a year for five years not to be able to use the slough. If we move that bridge up there in front of the new soft waterfront project, we can let him use the slough during the wintertime, and the City of Salem gets to keep that landmark. I don't think we should be getting rid of people who have invested their money in this community and people they enjoy. That bridge being shorter across the slough and the path from Minto Island would benefit the City of Salem residents. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sturba. Is there any questions?
I do have one item. When I sent the pictures to the flood of '96.
This is an opportunity for the Council to ask you questions for just a second.
Okay.
Ron, just a minute. Did anyone have any questions? Okay, Ron, what else did you have? What's your other idea?
I sent a letter to the United States Coast Guard with my current pictures of concerns of the flood of '96, and I have that here if anybody in the city would like to take a look at those. I think they're taken from the east bank of the river here and off of Marion Street Bridge, and I'd love to share them with anyone who'd like to see them.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Jim Green?
Good evening. My name's Jim Green. I'm here representing Friends of Two Bridges, and we're a nonprofit. We've been working with the city to create this bridge. Let's build a bridge from Riverfront Park to Minto Brown Island. So I'm here to just say I support it, we support it, we think it's a great idea. You know, if this thing can happen, it's going to connect three different parks, have over 20 miles of trails. We think it's going to be a great thing for the city, going to be a landmark icon, and I'm just here to say, let's go.
Great, thank you, Mr. Green. Any questions for Mr. Green? Counselor Dickey?
Another question. I just want to say thank you to you and the Friends of Two Bridges for everything you have done to help make this a reality. I wish every project we had in the city had a group as committed as you guys to make it happen because I know that it wouldn't be happening if it weren't for you. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Dickey, the consent calendar?
Move the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Counselor Thomas? Oh, I'm sorry. What are you? Did you want to talk about something?
Yeah, I would. I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on 4.3A and B. I will not be voting on either one of these, and I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on the record by nature of my employment.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay. All those in favor of the consent calendar say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, nay. And you'll note Counselor Tesler. All right. Motion passes. You notice we had information reports. Any questions, comments on information reports? Okay. Oh, I see what you're looking for. Counselor Tesler, do you want to make a motion on this?
Yeah, I'd like to make the motion that the addition of information, item number five, information report, the revised report, be added to the record, please.
Second by Dickey.
And I'd also like to make sure that the news person in the back gets this version and not the version that's on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion to correct the item referenced by the motion. Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. And we have no other business. Without objection, the Urban Renewal Agency meeting is adjourned. Signed up? Did you sign up? Okay. Called order, the Salem City Council meeting for March 11th. If the recorder would please call a roll.
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki is absent, and in his place is guest Counselor Denise Quinn-Nanki.
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Bernardz?
Here.
Counselor Clem is absent, and Mayor Peterson is absent.
Okay, thank you. We have no additions, deletions, or revisions. Counsel comment. Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. I just wanted to comment that Hoodview Park is now open. They took the fences down last week, and there were lots and lots of people enjoying the sunshine over there, and it was great. There were probably somewhere between 100 and 200 people just playing in the park on Saturday afternoon. I lost count, so it's really been a nice addition to the neighborhood. So we'll be having a grand opening here pretty soon, and definitely we'll let everybody know about when that's going to happen.
Great, thank you. Counselor Bernardz?
Thank you. I actually had two things. I think it was two weeks ago I came in with a photo of a truck stuck underneath the underpass over at Orville Road in south, well, south of Salem, closer to Independence. But I emphasized then, as I'm emphasizing now, it has a direct impact. This happened again earlier this week, I think March 6th. I could be wrong about that. Thank you, Statesman Journal, for providing the photo, which is where I got it from. But anyway, I just want to bring it, that I'm going to be working on, some sort of motion to bring to the Council in reference to try to push together, push something together so that we address this issue as best we can at this level, on the county or state level, whatever we need to do to solve this kind of problem. Two trucks in two weeks is just too much. I had a second item I just really wanted to quickly cover. Our South Salem Neighborhood Association has a program called Just Walk. It's a program, a certain, well, that has, basically, the Neighborhood Association has come together to say that we're going to have different times that we're going to come together and walk in South Salem. So if you're a newbie to walking and exercising, you'll know somebody and a place that they'll be meeting, and it'll be easy to go to. On Wednesday mornings at 9:00, I have decided that I will host every Wednesday a walk at Minto Park, at the dog park, so you can bring your dog. I'm going to walk around in circles, and there's restrooms there and so forth, but this is a way to get ourselves out of a chair and on our feet.
Very good, thank you. Just one comment. March 15th is the 100th anniversary of the opening of the Union Street Bridge. I thought I'd just call your attention to that. I thought it was a great event. It's great that we can walk across it today. In those days, they took a train across. I think they had all of the city council loaded onto a cow catcher across the bridge. Okay. Public comment. Mary Lou Zeke? You're on.
Hello, how are all of you? Mary Lou Zeke at 1730 Fairmont Avenue in Salem, Oregon 97302. I was here to just discuss, or hopefully it's okay for the gallery to use the space on Ferry Street. I'm trying to think of the address exactly. I think you have a motion or whatever that's here tonight. And I'm going to be doing my sixth door show, and where I showcase a lot of the downtown businesses and do a walking tour. And I'm just thankful that you have that open space, and I think it's going to be really great for the downtown for the month of May.
Great, so it'll be all through the month of May?
Yes, and I'm hoping what I would like to use this space for during the month of April and the first week in May is to kind of advertise and to just push saying the door show will be happening and to please be watching for it and to come on downtown and to support our downtown businesses.
And I had one question for Mr. Wilch. What is the address on Ferry Street? Do you recall?
365.
365, thank you.
It's over there. But I brought some of my brochures from our third door show that if any of you would like them, and I brought a couple posters because I had some extras, so if anybody would like them.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments? Yes, Counselor?
So I'm so happy to look at the agenda and see Mary Lou Zeke in that space. If anybody could pull it off, it's Mary Lou. So this is going to be really cool. Everybody go down there and check out these doors because this is going to be a really awesome show in a big space with high ceilings, and this is going to be really wonderful. Really looking forward to this, Mary Lou Zeke. Thank you so much for everything you do downtown.
Thank you.
And your cute gallery that has items under $50, I might add.
And I'm sorry, do I need to go back?
Yes, you do.
I do. We'll be doing an event that will be a one night that will be open to the public on the 27th, which would be a Saturday evening, and everyone's invited, and it's where all the doors will be in one, that one location. Two weeks prior to the show, we'll have the doors at that location and spotlighted, so we hope to get lots of traffic coming by and that we'll see them, and then we'll move them out into the downtown. But for that evening, we'll have it open for that one night where we would love to invite the public to come in and join us for the celebration of supporting our downtown.
What time? And say the time and date again.
Okay, the date is April 27th. It's a Saturday evening. Everybody look at your calendar, is that right? And it would be probably, it will be from 7:00 to 9:00 o'clock.
Great, okay, thank you very much. Kathleen Dingus?
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Kathleen Dingus. I'm the Community Arts Education Director at the Salem Art Association. Am I supposed to say my home address?
You said just enough.
Okay, thank you. I'm here because we are also interested in 365 Ferry, of course, after Mary Lou Zeke uses it because she is awesome. I support that. So I oversee the Artist Services Program at the Salem Art Association, and this summer will be our fifth project space, which utilizes a downtown unleased building. We have a small grant to hire temporary staff and so on and so forth for project space. It's a three-month temporary contemporary art installation. I'm going to stick to my notes, or I will never read them. We have shown, exhibited, or had events with over 150 artists, more than that, but that's a conservative number. Project Space provides our community with the opportunity to interact with artists as we have studio artists in the space, as well as exhibitions changing quite often, and a number of events happening. Project Space brings arts and events to the downtown core during summer months. We have a pretty big first Wednesday. There's usually a performance and food and art openings and lectures happening that evening. Project Space is also something that brings contemporary, cutting-edge art to Salem. Everything is free and open to the public. So we have open hours, and the public comes in and can view the art, talk to studio artists, and learn about our events and about everything that Salem Art Association offers as well. In the past four years, we've counted over 4,000 people coming each summer, actually. Of course, it's increased over the years, but we did keep track, and we, over the three months, had about 4,000 in attendance, including all of our events. Also, we have artists and audience coming from as far away as Portland and Eugene over the summer months to downtown Salem. And again, we partner, basically, we can't do this project without someone supporting us in terms of giving us a space. We have a very small grant which doesn't even pay for it to happen, and the city would make this summer possible. So also, there's going to be a youth component and also a kids' space. So part of it will be for kids to make art and exhibit their work on pedestals and on wall space. Here are two posters from past years, so of course, we advertise this like crazy. So we love the 365 Ferry Street space. Thank you for considering this, and we would love to partner with you.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. Would anyone else like to address the council?
Good evening. I'm Mark Wig. I live at 1950 Saginaw Streets Out. And in 2008, the city passed a bond measure for streets, and one of the things on that measure that was listed was the purchase of the right-of-way for Marine Drive or the new bridge. Marine Drive is going to go in with or without a new bridge. What I'd like to encourage you to do, in talking to Mark Bakhtel, he said they need direction from council to go ahead and purchase the right-of-way for Marine Drive. And if you've got the right-of-way for Marine Drive now, we could put in a bike and ped path on that right-of-way, and it'd be a wonderful place for people to access Wallace Marine Park and also get on downtown. You have a bunch of apartment complexes, hundreds of apartment complexes right along that right-of-way, and I'm sure that with volunteer efforts, once the right-of-way is purchased, we can turn that into a nice bike and ped path. And so I'd encourage you to make that, you know, encourage them to buy it and make that action soon.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, great, thank you. Thank you for the suggestion. Anyone else want to address the council? All right, thank you. Counselor Dickey, could you move the consent agenda?
I move the consent calendar.
Second.
Second by Bernardz. Counselor Tesler?
Thank you. I have a conflict of interest on 4.3A, 4.3B, and 3 point, that's it. Yeah, A and B, sorry. By nature of my employment, I will not be voting on these items.
3.3?
3.3A and B, or 4.3, I'm sorry.
3.3.
3.3, I think.
Yeah, 3.3C and D. I'm sorry, I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Sorry. It's been that kind of day.
Okay, let's do it again. Which ones?
Okay, here we go. I need to declare a conflict of interest on 3.3C and 3.3D on the action items. By nature of my employment, I will not be voting on either one of these items tonight.
Okay, thank you. And Counselor Bernardz, do you want to?
Is this the point where I could ask a question of staff?
Yes, I do want to record, though, for you, two no votes. Items one and two on the legislative priority bills.
Thank you.
Okay, now, you had a question?
Well, I just, I've been reading a lot in reference to the budget that we've put together for the Minto Bridge and the trail accordingly, the purchase of the north end of the island and so forth. I was wondering if you could just give me a three-sentence recap. Where are we standing with the funds? What have we left? What have we done so far with all the action? We had three issues within the URA tonight, and we have three more here within City Council.
Wilch Urban Development, we are getting close. As you recall, there are two components to the project. There is the trail component, which is about 1.1 million. That, we are completely funded for that. We have the grants, and we have the, one of the items in tonight's Urban Renewal Agenda was to move about 215,000 to the city to, so that it can complete the trail and design. So that's, design is starting, and that's moving forward. The bridge is about an $8 million project, and right now, we've got about 1.6 million short. We do have an application in with ODOT for the balance, and on tonight's agenda was an additional application for permission to file with Oregon Parks and Rec for another $700,000, so that if we're successful and actually end up with more money, then we will reduce the amount of urban renewal money that we'll have to contribute to that. So we're getting very close.
So if we receive the grant of $700,000, we'll be down to about $900,000 that we're still looking for?
Yes, and I think I'll ask Annie Gorski to come up to speak as to what the timing of those. We've got, we're still about six months away about hearing on these grants, so I'll let her tell you where they are.
Good evening. My name is Annie Gorski. I'm a project manager in the city's Urban Development Department. In terms of the funding, or the timeline on those grants, the enhanced grant, which is our current request for just over 1.5 million, is currently going through the process. The Mid Willamette Valley Area Commission on Transportation is the regional group that's reviewing that application currently, and we understand that those recommendations will be before the Oregon Transportation Commission this fall, likely October, November, before we hear whether or not we've been successful with that grant. The second grant, which we're requesting authorization for this evening, is through the Oregon Parks and Recreation, and that grant, we will learn, or we understand, will be reviewed and recommended by June of this year. So much quicker timeline with a notice to proceed likely by July, so we'll know about that funding before the ODOT funding.
Okay, so the other side I want to make perfectly clear is these are funds that could not be used in the general fund of the city. They're not coming from other, we're not taking funds away from other issues within the city.
That's absolutely correct. These are, the grants that we're talking about are from both ODOT, and one's ODOT and one is Parks and Rec.
Thank you.
Any further questions? All right, motion on the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. We'll move on to public hearings, 4.8.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding ordinance bill number 5-13 relating to the Broadway High Street Overlay Zone, amending SRC 138.030.
Thank you, and we have a staff report.
Yes. Good evening. My name's Lisa Anderson-Ogilvy, and I'm a planner in the Community Development Department, and I'm here tonight to present the staff report for the proposed amendments to the Salem Revised Code. I requested the entire record for code amendment 13-01. The staff reports and their attachments be entered into the official record. In 1998, the Broadway High Street Overlay Zone was created to implement the vision of the North Downtown Plan. This map shows the entire overlay zone, which is broken into four distinctive areas. And tonight, we're concerned with Area 3. This map shows the area as it was proposed during the creation of the overlay zone and how it has been depicted on the city maps since its creation. However, it's come to our attention that the legal description of the area contained in the Salem Revised Code doesn't match what's supposed to be mapped, and the legal description, when it is mapped, looks like this. So as you can see, the northern area doesn't follow a logical boundary, and the southern area doesn't close. Therefore, staff is recommending that the council amend Chapter 138, Broadway High Street Overlay Zone, to correct the legal description of Area 3 and advance ordinance bill number 5-13 to second reading for enactment. Thank you.
Great, any questions? How did you find?
We reviewed them as part of the Unified Development Code, the description that's in the code, and when we mapped it, you know, it didn't- in the code, and when we mapped it, you know, it didn't look right. And this is a result of some, sometimes it was supposed to say easterly, and it says westerly, or vice versa, and that's how you get that. And then a little line of text was left out, too. So when you take that out, it's something quite different.
Okay, great. Any questions? Counselor Tesler, a motion? Or do we do a motion? Close the hearing first. Counselor Tesler, do you have a motion?
Sure, it's yours, but I'll make the motion. I'll move staff recommendation on that. It seems like a fine idea.
Second by Clausen. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes. Second public hearing. Is that, what is that?
Actually, Chair Bennett, it's the adoption of the order. So
We did that, huh?
We just need a motion to adopt the order.
Oh, I see.
In case number CPCC, partition 12-08. So we've already had the hearing, and you've adopted a tentative oral decision. This is the final written decision.
Counselor Tesler?
I'd like to adopt this order number 2013-02 CPC-CCPAR.
Second by Dickey. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes. We have no special order of business or unfinished business. We have several information reports. Any questions, comments on these information reports? Guest Counselor Nanki, did you have any? Did you want to? No. You can, though, you know. Just checking. I don't want you to feel like you're just being left out here.
No, no. It's all good.
So, we'll move on then. We have a second reading on an ordinance.
Ordinance Bill Number 1913 relating to ambulance service franchises and agreements, amending SRC 34.638 and repealing SRC 34.633, 34.635, and 34.715. Counselor Benards?
Yea.
Counselor Clem is absent. Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki is absent. Counselor Clausen?
Aye.
Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
And Mayor Peterson is absent.
Okay, motion pass, or ordinance passes. And we have any further public comment? Yes, we do. Ron Sturba?
Hello, council members. I'm settled down a little bit here now. Hi, again, my name's Ron Sturba, and I wanted to address city council in the city. I saw what I thought was disturbing in the Statesman Journal on February the 6th, and what it is, it's our congressperson, Mr. Schrader, over on the go cross between Pringle and 25th Street. The people, the citizens contacted a congressional representative about a local issue of sidewalks on the street going to Social Security Administration. I'm really upset that the people had to go to a congressional representative when this should have been taken care of locally. And each one of you counselors have an area of concern that you've heard from your residents in your ward. Listen to them, and listen to what they have to say, and feel good about the moral choices that you make and how you spend money within the city. God made trophies of all of us to make good moral choices in everything that we do. So I'm asking, don't let our citizens go elsewhere when we can handle it right here. This is a great city. I love this city, and I think it has a lot of potential, and everything that everyone has done in here, I really like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you very much. And it looks like Mr. Wig has left. Okay. Does anyone else want to address the council? Okay. Have no further business. Without objection, city council meeting is adjourned.
Is it normally this fast?
No.